The Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations now convenes its hearing. In accordance with the open government law and public notices for today's proceedings were sent to the media on Thursday, March 20th, 2014, and again on Tuesday, March 25th, 2014. Notice was also posted on the Guam Legislature's website beginning on March 20th, 2014. For the record, today is Thursday, March 27th, 2014, and the time is now 10:33 a.m. Please be advised, the committee will not be hearing the nomination of Mr. Edward Antalan to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Guam Board of Directors. Mr. Under, Mr. Antalan is currently indisposed, and we will be rescheduling his confirmation hearing at a later date. The committee will hear and accept testimony both oral and written on the following items. First, we have two nominations on the docket, Ms. Rosalinda A. Tolan to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Guam Board of Directors, and Mr. Govinder Subti to also serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors. We have two bills today, Bill 260-32 introduced by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, and Bill 261-32 also introduced by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. Bill 260 is an act to add a new subsection F to subsection thirteen one oh four of chapter thirteen of Title IV of the Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring a tax clearance from the Department of Revenue and Taxation within the financial disclosure of all candidates for public office, and all officials appointed by Imago Lahe whose appointment is subject to the consent of Ula Satoran Guahan. Bill number 261 is an act to add a new subsection seventy-six four oh five to Article Four of Chapter Seventy-Six, Title Eleven of the Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring a tax clearance for professional licenses. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge some of my fellow senators present this morning. To my immediate right is Senator Frank Uggan Jr., and to my immediate left is Senator Alenia Machida. I think a lot of us are already familiar with the requirements for public hearing conducts, I'll just forego that for now. I do know that our two nominees do have some other obligations that they would like to make sure they get to. So at this time, I'd like to call forward Ms. Rosalinda Tolan and Mr. Govinder Subti. We'll go ahead and have both of your nominations at the same time, so please join us. For the nomination of Ms. Tolan, I do have some individuals who wish to testify. Mr. Peter Roy Martinez, Mr. Jess Torres, and Ms. Joanne Bloss, please join us also at the table. Yes, Ms. Bloss is the mayor of Asanmaena. Linda, are you from Asanmaena? Oh, okay. Always nice to have your mayor come and testify in favor. And Peter Roy, I understand you're also going to be testifying for the nomination of Bic? For both, yes?
Yes, okay.
So we'll go ahead and have the individuals who are here in support of the two of you go ahead and testify first. Peter Roy, do you mind if you go ahead and take the lead, and since you're here especially for both nominees?
Thank you.
Buenos, Senator Mike San Nicolas, Senator Uggan, and Senator Yamasita. And Pedro R. Martinez, the executive manager for the AB Wampat International Airport. And I'm here to testify on behalf of Bic Subti and Linda Tolan, and as well as Edward Antalan to the Board of Directors. Buenos, senators.
Buenos, Senator Mike.
This testimony is submitted to the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations in full support of the reappointment of Mr. Edward G. Antalan, Ms. Rosalinda A. Tolan, and Mr. Govinder Subti to the AB Wampat International Airport Guam Board of Directors. Individually, these directors have demonstrated responsible corporate governance throughout their terms of service on the GIAA Board of Directors. Mr. Antalan has served since 2012, Mrs. Tolan since 2011, Mr. Subti enters his third non-consecutive term in the GIAA Board of Directors that span over twenty years and three administrations. They each have distinct aptitude in creating policy and making decision to what is best for the AB Wampat International Airport. Mr. Antalan, Mrs. Tolan, and Mr. Subti are from very diverse backgrounds. This diversity creates a balanced and fair synergy amongst themselves and other members of the board, often finding resolution on airport issues. An example of their service was the September 20th, 2013, closing of the $240 million airport revenue bonds, which was the most successful municipal bond sale ever in Guam's history. Also under their oversight, the airport also closed FY 2013 with a clean audit and posted a $7 million increase in net assets. Their continued service is much needed to proceed with the $167 million in projects with funds from the revenue bonds and federal grants. Key projects include international arrival corridor, phase-three near-fault seismic upgrade, whole baggage screening relocation, security screening checkpoint, flight information display system, integrated passenger loading bridge replacement, common use check-in facilities, fuel system improvements, parking expansion, inter-island passenger facility, aircraft rescue and firefighting facility replacement, cargo apron relocation, replacement of terminal seedings, access control and security improvement, and terminal flooring replacement, along with other capital improvements, additions, and extensions to the airport. Your favorable consideration to reappoint Mr. Edward G. Antalan, Mrs. Rosalinda A. Tolan, and Mr. Govinder S. Subti to the AB Wampat International Airport Guam Board of Directors is greatly appreciated. Should you have any questions, I will be happy to address you. Pedro R. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Peter Roy. We also have today, um... Madam Mayor, I'm going to let all the constituents go first, because elected officials will just wait for that. So good to have Mr. Torres, Jess Torres.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Senator Uggan, Senator Yamasida, and Senator, the one that I always watched about sports, Bretton McCready. My name is Jess Torres, the longest-serving executive manager of the AB Wampat Guam International Airport. Eight consecutive year under previous administration. I'm back again as a board member, and was back again as a former executive manager. I'm here this morning because there's three of my colleagues, and as a vice chairman, I think it's incumbent upon me to be able to be down here, share my opinion, and certainly my support to the committee. Being the executive manager, being a former board member under the previous administration, I've had the opportunity to see both sides. And it's very pleasing that in my role as the vice chairman right now, these two people, including Ed, who is under the weather as I understand it, but his spirit is with us this morning. They've given themselves to the airport, they've given themselves in their private role to the community, and it is so beautiful and so heartwarming to be a part of a group called the Board of Directors of the best-run agency in the entire government of Guam is the AB Wampat Guam International Airport. And I think the various backgrounds that all of us, all seven members, have in our experience as residents and in our experience in our professional life, we put those together and we give it the best shot. Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, during the deliberation of our board meetings, we do have some healthy exchange. But at the bottom line, all seven of us, if we're all present there, give the best shot that we can give so that the people of Guam can continue to have a well-run, very profitable, and the best agency in the entire government. So I'm just a small fry in that thing. I just wanted to ensure that with your concern about making your airport also the best run in the entire Marianas, that you would give favorable consideration, and when you guys get back to session after the committee report is done, that favorable acknowledgement can be given to all three of my colleagues. As the vice chairman in lieu, Mr. Chairman, I think our chairman Antalan is, I think he's under the weather or not? I don't know what ailment he has, so I guess as the vice chairman I'm here, and if we can answer any of the concerns or questions that all four of you and perhaps other members of the committee, we'll be more than happy to do that, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. I just wanted to ask if the airport is the best agency in the government, does that mean that I'm the best oversight chairman in the government?
Sure, ever since I was down here and I saw you raised your right hand to become an elected official of the Guam Legislature, you are indeed the best chairman, you know, oversight chairman. But you have three good colleagues that are working very closely with you and behalf of the people of Guam, and anything and everything that's going to be good for our airport, Mr. Chairman, it's going to be good for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
You're welcome.
Madam Bloss.
Half a day. Mr. Chair, Senator Mike San Nicolas, Senator Frank Bloss Jr., and Senator Alenia Machida, and Senator Bretton McCready. Buenos, and half a day. I am here in support of my constituents, Linda Rosalinda A. Tolan. A humble person, a businesswoman, and very supportive of our community in the Asanmaena. She is part of my MPC, she's also my lion's sister. As part of the community, she has participated and committed herself to the community, to include the Paris. So with her being, in support of her being nominated for the Board of the Guam International Air Terminal, she is committed, and I know she would say, "Oh, I have a board meeting to attend, I can't attend your meeting", and I support her heartily on that. Her commitments are there for the people of our island, Guam. So in lieu of everything else, please place her back as part of the committee for Guam International Air Terminal. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Bloss. We'll now go ahead and hear from the two nominees. We'll go ahead and start with Linda first, Ms. Tolan.
Half a day. And good morning, Mr. Chairman, Senator Mike San Nicolas, and all the members of the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, and that is Senator Frank Uggan, Senator Alenia Machida, and Senator Bretton McCready. My name is Rosalinda Abaro Tolan, and I humbly come before you seeking your approval to serve for another three years as a board director to the AB Wampat International Airport Agency of Guam. First, I'd like to thank our good governor, Eddie Basakovo, for appointing me as one of the two women serving the GIAA Board, which empowers us as women to work with our five fellows. I was first appointed to the GIAA Board in 1911, and I was given the chance to contribute my input in the policymaking and fiscal responsibilities. And I'm proud to say that between the board and the management, we as a team, we are making ongoing progress, phenomenal progress, to the benefit of our airport and of the community of Guam for the convenience and comfort, safety, and security of the passengers coming through our island. The successful revenue bonds that happened in latter part of 2013 make it possible for the many changes, expansion, growth, and development at the airport. Management has established the goals and objectives for 2014 that includes strategic planning, air service development, finance, capital programs, operations, and services, community engagement. As a board member, I fully support all the good that the management under the leadership of the executive manager Chuck Ada does for our airport to be the first-class gateway to Micronesia and the Western Pacific. Without further ado, I reiterate my request to your committee to be given another chance to continue serving as a board director of the prestigious AB Wampat International Airport Agency of Guam. I take this opportunity to give my profound gratitude and appreciation to this committee for giving me this opportunity to be before your confirmation. Si jus maasi, thank you. Maraming salamat po. Have a pleasant everyone, God bless us all.
Thank you, Linda. We'll go ahead and hear now also from Mr. Subti and Bic.
Good morning and half a day, Mr. Chairman and three senators. Good morning to everybody. It seems like it was just yesterday that I was here before you, and yes, it was this past October when I was appointed to fill in for the remaining term vacated by a prior board member. I sincerely appreciated the support and approval from this committee and the entire legislative body at this time. Once again, I'm here before you this confirmation hearing to continue my public service as a member of the Board of Directors for the Antonia B. Wampat International Airport Authority Guam. I believe this term is longer than five months this time around. I would like to thank the governor Eddie Calvo for having this continued trust and confidence to reappoint me to the GIAA Board. In the short months of GIAA Board, I'm seeking, seeing a greater emphasis and renewed focus on service. Many of our capital improvements projects and other programs have expected to improve the passenger experience and create a sense of Gohan hospitality through our island or the airport. We are committed to enhance the services to our island community as well as to our visitors who travel through or visit our airport. We are committed to creating a safer, secure, and more dynamic working environment for the six thousand employees of the GIAA and its stakeholders. In the months ahead, I and my colleagues on the board look forward to a closer collaboration with the legislative branch. It's always with the positive legislative intervention can the airport succeed with its program and stimulate our presented economic development and a job creation. Again, I humbly ask for your confidence and support while I and my colleague here, Chairman Antalan who's not present, and Director Tolan to continue our public service as a member of the GIAA Board and Director, thank you.
Thank you, Bic, thank you, Linda. And thank you all very much for joining us here for, in support of their nomination. I do have just one question. First of all, thank you very much for your willingness to step up and serve again our people and our airport. It's the gateway for our tourism, it's a vital piece of what makes Guam successful economically, and your service in the past and your willingness to serve going forward is very, very welcomed and appreciated by the people of Guam. My only question was, you know, we're doing a lot of capital improvements to expand the airport and to make sure that our departures and our arrivals are separate and increase the operational efficiency. There is something, though, that I want to make sure we're able to get in front of, and that is biometrics. Making sure that we have the proper biometric system in the event that we're going to be pursuing, to a greater extent, the Philippine visa waivers and the Chinese visa waivers, both of which I think will be very, very good for our island and our people, and also more readily facilitated if we had a state-of-the-art biometric system at the airport for us to be able to track those visitors who are coming here under special visa considerations. So I'm not, I do, I have been communicating this issue with the chairman, Chairman Antalan, and I'll speak more at length with him about it during his nomination process. But I just wanted to find out from both of you as returning board members, are, would you guys be open to the airport prioritizing the adoption of a state-of-the-art biometric system in consultation with the Department of Interior and the Department of State so that we can fast-track the Philippine and Chinese visa waivers for the island?
I believe that as long as we are following the federal and local laws, regulations, and it's for the benefit of our island and the people of Guam, I'm for it.
Chairman, I, you know, I'm not too much aware of this, but I'm very sure, I was just talking, what I, just talking to Gerard about this just earlier. He was just telling me that increase of our travelers has increased tremendously, and they're looking into this system to make sure we better facilitate visitors and keep a data of that. I don't know much about it, but they're working on that. I was just talking to Gerard, what a coincidence, he just briefed me on that a few minutes ago. I'm full supporter of that.
Thank you both very much, because as, you know, a lot of us here in the community are aware that the more we can diversify our tourism base, the more we can facilitate travelers coming here, particularly from China and from the Philippines, our community, we much better off. And I think that the, one of the biggest roadblocks, of course, we need the federal approval, but I think that if we can get in front of that and not just go to the feds and ask them, "Hey, can you approve this?", but also go to them and say, "We have this state-of-the-art system, I think Guam is ready", I think that would very much help to move that process along. And I think that that would have to start at the airport. And I think that the airport would be the place for us to be able to get that infrastructure in place so that the governor can, and our congresswoman can go to the feds and say, "Our airport has it, the island's ready, let's move this along." So I'm very, I'm very happy to hear that both of you are going to be helping to facilitate that process. I'd like to now turn it over to any of my colleagues if they have any questions for either Linda or Bic, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to everyone. Thank you for the supportive testimony that you provided this morning, Mayor, and to Mrs. Torres, Mr. Martinez. Just a couple of things I'd like to note, obviously, when our people are watching some of these proceedings, they would like to know and understand exactly who is being appointed. And first and foremost, I just want to emphasize that both of you have mentioned that you already have previously served on the board. And Bic, I know this term is going to be a little bit more extensive beyond five months. So in this case, just a couple of things. One is, I think it's very, very important, and this has in the past always been an issue that I presented in terms of questions for new appointees. Looking at your attendance record, Ms. Tolan, in 2011, you attended ninety percent of all the meetings that were held, board meetings that were conducted. And likewise, in 2012, in 2013, you were excused on two separate occasions, but you had attended every single meeting other than those two. And then in 2014, the record also reflects that. With regards to Bic, your record in terms of the short tenure that you've been serving our people through the Airport Authority also reflects that in fact you've attended ninety percent of your plus of all the meetings that have been conducted at the Airport Authority. So that's a very good reflection of not only your commitment, but your direct service to the people of Guam through the Airport Authority. Just in terms of other information that perhaps our people would appreciate in the community is, first and foremost, Bic, I noticed that in 1980 you graduated from a particular high school on island. And I do have my biases, anyone that graduates from Father Duenus. But, yes, absolutely, I believe we all are. But in conjunction with that, in addition to being a graduate of Father Duenus, you also continued your education at our university, the University of Guam. So I certainly, obviously, have my biases when it comes to looking at Father Duenus and then also with our own university here in our community. Now reverting back to Ms. Tolan. Obviously, everything that is provided in your packet is reflective of your character and your personality. But one thing I want to highlight are some of the community contributions that you have really extended yourself to over the course of most of your adult life. I mean, the Filipino Ladies Association past president, also the Filipino-American President's Club of Guam, first female chairwoman, Guam Paradise Lions Club, Guam Harmony Lions Club, Alliance Club International District Two Oh Four, Guam Council of Women's Clubs, the American Cancer Society Board Director, the Ascend Catholic Church Finance Council, and also a lecturer and a choir member at your parish council, and to include the Guam Women's Club as a secretary. And that really is reflective of your community service and your continued desire to be able to extend yourself. So I wanted to share, Mr. Chairman, some of that information for the general public to understand the two individuals that we are entertaining in terms of their appointment to the Board, the Board of Directors over at the Guam Airport Authority. So just on that note, and understanding my admitted biases as it applies to community service and as it applies to graduating from Father Duenus and proceeding on to the University of Guam, both of you certainly have my support. Thank you for your willingness and your desire to serve our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. I graduated from Yogi too, by the way. Senator Yamasida.
Well, I didn't graduate from that school, so. Thank you. But I did graduate from Yogi, one of the degrees, so. Thank you both for the willingness to serve. Public service can be very challenging, and during these times, it really does require a lot of attention and a lot of work. My question now perhaps is more direct about how the Board of Directors works with the airport management. In that, you know, I understand the airport management, Chuck and his people are the operations, right? And you are the Board of Directors, so you probably look at policies or overall regulations or, you know, where you want to get. And so when you hear or when we read about how we didn't have airline service to Saipan and Rota, or we heard, my mom just left last Monday, and the whole process in Hawaii changed on them. When you hear those kinds of things that happen, and more than likely, that is not anything to do with you, but at the same time, I think it does have something to do with you. In that, when those kinds of major changes, you know, usually when in Hawaii, you transit, yeah? You get your, put it on the carts, and you take it over there, and then you go to your gate. Well, this time, everybody had to take their luggage and go recheck it in. And, but nobody could, nobody was told why. So I figured it must have been a security issue, right? So I wonder, how do we, how do we better, you both want to do, you want to improve and enhance the customer service to our families? How do we better understanding and then imparting that kind of information to our travelers so that at least mentally, they can prepare to know that this is where I'm going to go? You know, for someone who travels all the time, it's really a non-issue. But for our families who don't travel all the time, for those of us who may be older, right? Or for those of us who may have a child with a disability, it really requires a lot of preparation. And so I'm wondering, how do we better know of what's going on or not going on, and how do we communicate that to our community, right? That's one thing. And the last time I met, it was last term, we met with the board, Peter Roy's conference room, I remember. We had talked about other issues like working telephones in the terminal, standards of service, really, is what that was, finding cabs, right, accessibility to cabs, and those were just real basic standards of service. And so I guess two questions. And so I guess two questions. One is, how do we ensure that communication goes to our travelers and their families? And then the second is, have we improved in finding a working phone or in finding a taxi cab that could take? Sometimes when we arrive on our island, our family misunderstood when we're coming, so we go out and we look for a cab. The last time I traveled, I looked for a cab, and I couldn't find one. And then I went back in to try to use the phone, because my cellphone is dead, and I couldn't find a working phone. And so, you know, that was over a year ago. So my guess is it's been addressed. But how do you ensure the standards of service as Board of Directors are reviewed and addressed?
Senator, we, you know, we, as Board Member, we're just the policymaker, but going back to that, you know, airport is actually very service-oriented, you know, coming people, we are the first thing with, when the visitors come, you know, so we have to give them a good, I think that we are, Guam is good service, welcome to Guam. So employees at the airport are actually very, very well aware, and they've been working hard, and including the GBB, you know, when they enter, the GBB is actually assisting the passengers. And I think so we have few employees helping with the, who can translate, if they can speak English or, you know. And going back to the cab, I think so we have a very good, we have, we had bid it out for that, we have a very good cab coming out, and I'm pretty sure all the telephones are working. And we're working the new bathrooms, so everybody's aware, the bathrooms will be done very, very shortly. That was the biggest concern from last five, few years.
And sir, it really has been. It really has been an issue, because, and it's not only clean bathrooms, but bathrooms that are accessible.
Yeah, you know, and right now, I think so we have two or three different contracts for cleaning, so we have not given to one, we're giving to two or three different, so we have some issues, and Gerard has taken good care of that, you know, the airport management. So right now, as we talk, you know, beside the construction going on, everything at the airport seems pretty good.
Thank you, Vic. And so then, Linda, when we talk about, you know, I understand policy, I really do, but I also understand how policy can really influence performance, and it really should, right? That's why you have it. So the training of everybody in our airport, right, the home and security, the customs, the people at the counters, when you stand and you watch, and you just wonder, or when they mistreat, the last time I traveled, it was the most awful experience. And I've stated this for the record already, and it's just like you pay so much money to be mistreated, right? But for whatever reason, so I guess my question is, standard of service, how do we ensure that everybody who's working at our airport meets a standard of service? So that every one of us, visitors, yes, but residents also? You know, when we're there to leave and when we're coming home, how do you ensure that the customer service is paramount? That anybody who walks through our airport and is employed there knows that we shall respect and have high regard for all the visitors and all our returning or leaving families, residents? How do we do that?
Okay, Senator, are you after, this is a small island with close-knit families, and mostly those arriving passengers, they are, they have families welcoming them. As to more customer service, I think our airport are already giving that, not unless you address a particular one, that we have to take care, you know, to give us the attention, what is the problem, and then we'll come out and see what we can do and solve it.
Yeah, well, so the question, and I know now it's leaning more and more, looking like it's really an operations issue. The question then is, is there a policy to ensure that customer service is paramount in all, at all levels, in all regards, and that we have continuous training? And we all know that training always has to be continuous in order to meet excellence, because we're all human beings, we always have to be reminded, you know, and everything changes, or especially with technology, technology changes. So is there a policy statement that ensures that customer service is always addressed and reinforced for all of our current employees, all our new employees? Is it a part of their performance evaluation? Like, and I guess that's where it leans, so we ensure that we're holding, you know, the employees in our airport accountable?
Yes, I think so. I believe so. The management is on the dot on that one, evaluation of the employees and the customer service.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I just, again, it's when you're standing there and you're watching the treatment, it's like, wow, you know, we just need to, sometimes I think we just need to take a deep breath and just, you know, do what it is that we need to do. And they're not necessarily your employees, that's what I'm saying, they're people who use our airport. And so for me, there's got to be a standard of services, that we welcome you, we want you, we need to partner with you, but this is how we need to behave and perform and make sure everybody feels when they're at, you know, the A B International Airport. Thank you.
Thank you to Senator.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're fine? Senator McCready? Any comments or questions for this, sure? Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for you guys showing up today and testifying. I see a lot of familiar faces in the crowd that's been with the airport for a long time. I remember about fifteen years ago, my first, my first sports gig out there was the Birdman Rally. And I've never seen it happen again, but it was fun while it happened. And, you know, so we already have hard-working people at the airport who has a wealth of knowledge and information. And I'm pretty comfortable with the people we see in front of us today to lead us airborne, to keep the airport on the right track, to lead us forward. I, you know, I believe there will always be problems. You'll never have a perfect running system or a standard operating procedure, but it's how we address those problems, it's how we find solutions to those problems. So I think my good colleague Senator Yamashita is absolutely right. Is there a standard operating procedure when it comes to customer service? And I'm pretty sure there is one. And, but that still isn't an ironclad format for customer service. There's going to be problems, we just have to address them. And I think we've done that over the past few years, since I've worked with the airport, and I think we continue to do that. So, you know, I want to congratulate you guys and thank you guys for taking this step. And I believe your term is now three years, Ms. Tolan. You know, I feel bad about Vic, I haven't, I didn't know your name was Gravinda. I've been calling you Vic all these years. And so when I looked at your packet, I thought you had a brother or something. But congratulations, and it's like Senator Uggan said, this is a, this is a no-brainer. You guys have our full support, and we just ask you that, as Senator Yamashita said, to enforce some of these operating procedures when it comes to customer service, and when problems arise, we solve the problem, we move forward. And if we do that together, I don't see any problems arising. So thank you very much, and congratulations, and look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Thank you, Senator.
I'd like to thank all of my colleagues. I'm sorry, for the record, also, I'd like to acknowledge Vice Speaker Cruz has also joined us, but I'd like to thank my colleagues in the committee for joining us in this process, and all of you who've came out to testify directly for the record. Also, we have numerous written testimonies that were submitted in favor of the both of you, and we have a lot of people in the audience as well who came to offer their moral support as well in terms of being present. Linda, Vic, thank you so much for your willingness to serve our island and our people in the airport, and I'm very grateful for both of you being here and for both of you willing to serve again. Look forward to more continuous progress at the airport, and we've been doing well so far.
Yes.
And as always, we will bring up whatever it is that comes to our attention, and we'll work together to make sure it gets addressed for the people of Guam. So thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, at this point, the airport is celebrating the Mes Chamaro, so we're all inviting you on behalf of the board and the management. It's lunchtime, so we have the whole spread. Please come and join us.
You know, Linda, since you said that on the record now, all the people of Guam, go check out the airport.
Thank you so much.
Not just us, tell them, Senator S. Nicholas, and the committee sent you guys up there. Thank you very much for joining us today. We'll go ahead and conclude the nomination hearings for Ms. Linda Tolan and Mr. Vic Swobti. Next on the agenda, we do have two bills, Bill 260 and Bill 261, both of which are introduced by the author, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, who I would like to now yield some time to, to go ahead and be. Vice Speaker, are you going to be talking about both in one, about one time, or would you like me to handle them one after the other?
Let's do them one after another.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Speaker. Okay, so we are now on Bill Number 260, as introduced by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, who will now provide his opening remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for conducting this hearing on Bill 260. About two legislatures ago, I introduced legislation to require that those of us running for public office get a tax clearance before we can announce our candidacy. After introducing that legislation, I was brought to my attention that that would be inorganic, because we didn't have the authority to impose more restrictions on the candidacy of an individual, and especially tying it to the tax, making sure that we all pay taxes. I, so I did a different approach. We are all required to provide a financial disclosure statement, and in the financial disclosure, I am suggesting by this piece of legislation, it's only a one-line amendment to the financial disclosure, just adding that we also require that they, or actually a paragraph at the end, that the financial disclosure report that's due on the 22nd of this next month include a tax clearance from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I don't think that any of us think that we are above the law, and we, like every other citizen on this island, must and should pay our taxes in the interest of transparency, this being Transparency Month, and there's all the discussion of transparency. I think it's imperative that we, as elected officials, are transparent about the fact that we have filed our taxes, whether we paid it or whether or not we have an agreement with revenue tax to pay it over the next several months or the next couple of years, at least that we filed, and that we do have an arrangement with revenue taxation. I think the electorate has a right to know that, and I think it is a good addition to the, to the financial disclosure. I'm not asking you to attach your tax, your filing to see whether or not the income matches the report. I'm just asking that you did file your taxes. It'd be another one, if revenue taxation would check the financial disclosure statements to see whether or not everybody's reporting it correctly, but that's a whole other issue. This is a very simple amendment, that the financial disclosure, starting in 2015, would include a provision requiring that we get a clearance from revenue taxation like every other taxpayer on this island. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. We do have present Mr. John Camacho, Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Thank you, sir, for joining us. I do believe you have testimony for both bills, so if you can go ahead and proceed with Bill 260.
Thank you, Senators, Chairman Mike S. Nicholas, Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz, Senator Frank Uggan, Senator Eliam Yamashita, and Senator Brett McCready. My name is John Camacho, and currently the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. It's a very short bill, like the Vice Speaker said, it's an extension of the requirement for the Election Commission, and we duly support all the requirements that is stated in the law, in the proposed legislation. I thank you.
Thanks, John. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Camacho with respect to Bill 260? If not, we'll go ahead and consider Bill 260 heard, and we'll go ahead and proceed to Bill 261, also introduced by Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and again, thank you for conducting this hearing on Bill 261, an act to add a new Section 76405 to Article 4 of Chapter 76 of Title 11 of the Guam Code annotated relative to requiring a tax clearance for professional licenses. This is tax time, as it were, within the next two weeks, all of us should be filing our taxes. And again, I believe that everybody has a responsibility to file taxes, and no one is above the law, and especially not those of us that are in professionals, professionals whose business licenses are not issued by Revenue and Taxation, but are issued by our respective professional associations. With the BAR Association, several years ago, the authority to issue tax clearance, I mean, renewed business license was taken away from Revenue and Taxation, and it was vested in the Supreme Court of Guam. And though the requirement for attorneys requires that we do ten hours of continuing legal education, and now they have a new rule that we need to prove that we attended those courses by signing a, sending in the actual list of classes that we took during the year. In the past, when I imposed this rule, when I was the Chief Justice fourteen years ago, we just took it on the word of the attorneys that they were going to do this. There wasn't much screaming when they were required, in the last couple of years, to actually submit the list of courses that they took and the number of hours for each one that they're claiming. I initially proposed to the Superior, to the Supreme Court, that it, under its rulemaking authority, impose this requirement. I did this because I saw that after I raised some issues about the contractors' license, I mean contractors having businesses up at Anderson and other places and renewing their licenses, word got back to me that some of the contractors were not paying their share of taxes on island. So we introduced legislation that required that they do this, and now the Contractors' License Board on its own has now a form, and it has four boxes, six boxes on it, and the person has to go to every single section at Revenue and Taxation, get a stamp and initial that they are, that they have filed for that year. Those of you that have homes on this, I mean, are renting property on this island or have businesses on this island, every July, you have to go in and get a business license renewal, and before you can get your business license renewal, you're supposed to go in and also get clearance from the Business Privilege Tax Section that says that you're current in your GRT or that you filed your exemption that you made less than forty thousand. But still, everybody is required, regardless of how small your business is. The only ones that don't have to do that are the professionals. And so I think that it is time that all the professions, everybody on this island, be made to at least get a business, I mean, a tax clearance from Revenue and Taxation in the same way that the contractors and the CPAs do it, and they're doing it on their own. As Mr. Camacho put it, there's nothing in their statute that requires them to do it, but they believe that if they're the ones preparing the taxes, I mean, tax returns for all of us, that they should have made and be current on their taxes. And so they also have a form with the boxes on there where they have to go and they get their, get the clearances. The appeals board does the same thing. The only ones that, in my review, that don't do that are the medical licensure and allied health professionals and the BAR Association. And when I asked the Supreme Court to do this, I got word back, I got a letter back from the Chief Justice saying that they had never received as many negative comments in opposition to the promulgation of this new rule. And the Supreme Court, much to my dismay, and I'm saying it dismay, because I'm more than disappointed, much to my dismay, they decided to sidestep the issue and decide that they were not going to impose the rule. So I decided instead, well, I'll make it statutory. You don't want to do it under your own authority, I will make it statutory, and from here on out, before you can get your renewal of your bar license on the 1st of January of each year, you have to have submitted to the Supreme Court a form showing that you have an "are current" with all of your taxes, and at least have an arrangement for having paid it, even if you haven't paid it, at least that you filed, and that, and the reason why I'm concerned about this, Mr. Chairman, is that one of my staff went up to Revenue and Taxation last week and was... Taxation, uh, last week and was, uh, talking to one of the staffers up there, and he was amazed. He just saw one file cabinet of the LLCs and LLPs. And he just glanced at it and could see that there were eight hundred and four, or at least that's what it said on the, on the, on the front of it, that there were eight hundred, just on that one file cabinet of LLCs and LLPs. And a lot, if not every law for Mont Island is either LLC or an LLP, and sometimes you can't follow which one it is and whether they're still together or not, and whether or not they are paying their taxes. And so I think it's imperative that before anyone gets their license, um, um, that, like all of the small mom and pop stores and individuals that own one little apartment that have to get tax clearance before they get their business license renewed, that everybody, and I mean everybody, has to get the tax clearance from Revenue and Taxation before their license is issued either by Revenue Tax or by their professional, uh, association. So I thank you very much for this, uh, opportunity, um, to speak on my bill and, and hope that, uh, the department supports my position.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. Um, Mr. Camacho again on Bill 261.
Thank you again, and good morning again, Senators. Uh, my name is John Camacho, I'm the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and I am in favor of Bill 261 dash thirty-two. It must be pointed that all applicants for new or renewal of business licenses that are issued by the General Licenses and Registration Branch of the Department of Revenue and Taxation must obtain a tax clearance from the department that all required tax filings have been filed and the tax payments that are due have been paid or an arrangement have been made with the collection branch before the issuance of any new or renewed business licenses. It is the observation that the tax clearance requirement is very powerful, a very powerful reminder that tax filing and tax payment do must be updated or else the business license should not be renewed by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. It is my understanding that in the past, way back in the seventies, I think we were, we were issuing those licenses for some of the services that are now governed by the board. Uh, I, as, as they formed the board, it, it took away those responsibilities from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I think this is way, way back in the seventies or the sixties, uh, from my, my understanding from, uh, uh, the person that was there for so many years. Uh, the, the department is fully aware that the Contractors Board requires all applicants to renew or renew contractors' license to secure tax clearance for Department of Revenue and Taxation. Similarly, the Board of Accountancy requires DRT tax clearance before the issuance to permit the renewal of practice of accountancy. It must be pointed out that our office cannot find a specific provision in either the Contractors Board or the Board of Ac- Accountancy statute that specifically mandates such board to secure DRT tax clearance prior to licensing. It's just, uh, been, uh, 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 an MOU or, uh, an agreement within both department and the accountancy and, and the Contractors Board that we do this. We wanted to make sure that, um, they go through the process before they actually renew those professional licenses. The practice of the attorney is regulated by the Supreme Court, uh, Section Guam Code Antici, seven, chapter nine, and nine A, and the practice of the physicians and doctors for medicine, dental, ophthalmistry, for some, uh, pharmacists, and other medical professions are regulated by the Practice Board and Medical Practice. Our office is not able to specifically find a provision in the relations for attorneys and physicians other than medical, or other medical professions that are currently required to obtain DRT tax clearance and all tax filings and tax payments due and have been paid prior to the issuance of the professional license. The current law requires business licenses to secure a clearance for all taxes and tax payment before we renew or renew our regular licenses. It is our firm belief that it is equally fair to require professionals such def- such as physicians and lawyers to secure a DRT clearance for all tax filing and payments before a renewal of professional license is issued. Bill number 261 dash thirty-two provides a process that levels the pain feel for the renewal of all kinds of licenses and professional licenses. It is for these reasons that the Department of Re- is in favor of this particular bill. And at this time, if you have any questions, I'll be able to answer them.
Thank you so much, John, for, um, your testimony and for being available for any questions. Do any of my colleagues have any for Mr. Camacho with respect to Bill 261? Vice Speaker Cruz.
Just a quick question, John, and, and I'm not asking for a specific profession, and I'm not asking for any names. Okay? Just so that I don't wanna violate any of the confidentiality that you're supposed to, to have. But if memory serves me right, earlier this year, there was a story that quoted you as saying that you had three tax fraud cases that you were doing investigations on and were completing and would be sending to the Attorney General's Office at, at some point. Um, again, I'm not asking whether or not those are completed, that was just a news story that I remember hearing, am I correct? In, in that recollection?
I, I believe this.
Without saying what profession or giving any names, would this law have prevented any of those fraud cases?
Again, um, i- in other words, this is, this is, this particular law really looks at the professionals. There's a lot out there also that don't deal with professionals, like individual people that go work, you know, like, like, uh, individual employees that go. So it's a combination of both. It will sometimes, and it, sometimes if it doesn't, it, it won't, in other words. So, uh, again, we're dealing with professionals only here. So, uh, the, the, the sixteen, six thousand, sixty thousand taxpayers is not all professionals, and they, they all don't have to go and clear or get a license because they're not in business. But if it, if it, if it's within that professional, it, I guess your answer is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Camacho. If there's no other questions, many of my colleagues and no one else who would testify on Bill 261, you had another comment, John?
I just have a question, and I, and I, I guess we went so fast on Bill 260. Uh, you, you, you mentioned something that for 2015, uh, on that particular, it would apply, or is it when the law is passed?
I think I'm gonna have-
Because the law currents, the law currents say when, when it's really, uh, signed into law.
I, I understand. We're not having session until the middle of next month. The financial disclosure statements are due April the twenty-second, and so the-
Oh, okay, so you're anticipating that, oh, okay.
They've already sent out the forms to us, reminding us, and that's not included.
Oh, okay, so I, I-
I'm gonna have to make an amendment to make sure that it, if, if and when it passes, that it's only going to, it'll come into effect, um, in the next year when all, everybody files it. For those people that asked for an extension to file in October, it would not be fair for them to have to do it if all the rest of us decide, oh, we're gonna file early so we don't have to answer that question this year. So, we'll, we'll make it for, for everybody.
Okay, just, just trying to clear that.
So, so just to clarify then, Vice Speakers to Bill, Bill 260 is for elected officials and appointed officials-
Right.
-and them having to get tax clearance. And Bill 261 is for all professionals, uh, doctors, lawyers, all those that are linked to the bill, who also will need to get a tax clearance. And for both parties, it'll be effective for 2015.
Okay.
So he's, he's poweried across the board, he's doing it for public sector and private sector, uh, just to make sure that we're getting those clearances through the system. And it will both be effective at the same time.
So, so i- in others, when you say, uh, 2015, uh, if, if a new, um, professional wants to get a license, uh, with their, with their board, uh, let's, let's say latter part of this year, that won't apply until the following year, in other words. Let's say this bill passed into law, uh, in October, and somebody wants to get, uh, you know, uh, into the profession, uh, in, in November or December, it will not apply to those until the following year, for those new, new ones that are coming in?
I would assume that they didn't have a tax liability from before. I, I don't know, but just trying to make sure that nobody says that I'm trying to single out anybody. I'll just make it apply for everybody at the same time, so that it's not said that I'm targeting any, any, any one person, but everybody will have to do it at the same time.
So, so are we saying that we're, on this particular, when it's, it's passed, that you have an effective date?
Um, we'll make sure that we do have an effective date.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be better to do that.
Okay.
Thank you so much, John. That being said, um, we'll go ahead and ha- uh, consider Bill 261 having been heard, and that is the last item on the agenda that we have today. I'd like to thank all of my senators for joining us this morning, as well as everybody in the community, the members of the public who are watching at home. The committee will continue to receive testimony on all items heard this afternoon. Please address any written testimony to the committee on aviation, ground transportation, regulatory concerns, and future generations. And this may be submitted via email to senatorsonicholas@gmail.com or hand-delivered to the legislature's mailroom or to Suite 203 in the main legislative building, 155 Hessler Place, Hagotten near Guam. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance and participation at today's hearing. We are now adjourned at eleven-thirty this morning. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Yes, we will be returning at two o'clock for an oversight-